City Council was called into session. Let's begin with the opening prayer. I would like to invite my good friend, Mr. Colonel Jim Fletcher, to come up. Colonel Fletcher is a very dear friend of mine for whom I have a lot of affection. Colonel Fletcher occupies and wears many, many different hats throughout his life. I got to meet Colonel Fletcher, or Jim as I affectionately call him, as a mentor in the Veterans Treatment Court where Jim was one of the first, probably 10 mentors. I think first of many, many mentors as part of a Veterans Treatment Court that has been honored by an Attorney General of the United States, Eric Holder. Jim is also presently the President of Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 787, and is one of the many, many veterans who are active in this area improving the lives of his fellow veterans and many people throughout this great state and community. So it's our pleasure to have here Colonel Fletcher. So let's stand for the prayer, and please continue standing for the pledge which Colonel Fletcher will lead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. I'm honored to be here today to give the invocation at the first regular meeting of the newly-elected Tampa Council. May we pray. Heavenly Father, we ask your blessings on this meeting and these men. Give them the patience of Job, the faith of Moses, and the wisdom of Solomon as they do the citizens' business. We also ask that you be with each of us this day so that we may reflect your teachings in all that we do. Help us to always be mindful that we are your servant in service to others. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, its three colors, which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go call, please.
Dean Felder?
Here.
Carlson?
Here.
Maniscalco?
Here.
Seater?
Here.
Miranda?
Here.
Gudes?
Here.
Okay. Will anyone like to move for approval of the agenda? Okay. Second, we have a motion by Council.
Yeah, I just wanted to, Mr. Shelby suggested, I just wanted to request on the items that I've told that staff be present for those items.
Yes, and we'll do that. We have time set aside for that. We have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we move to ceremonial activities and Councilman Miranda.
Honorable Chairman Tampa City Council, honorable members of Tampa City Council, my pleasure this morning to be here to make the presentation to the City Tampa Water Department on two issues. One is the presentation of the fantastic work that's done by them, and I'll read part of it. In recognition of the Florida Water Reuse Week, we shall be celebrating that week between the 19th of May and 25th of May 2019. And that means that the water that we're using, that we're putting in the bay to clean up the bay, it's effectively working. We have over 813 million gallons of water a day that the state and this area serves, not the city of Tampa totally, but we have a great portion of that, like 60, 65 million gallons a day. My pleasure to represent this to you as the head of the Water Department, and I know you've been in water for a long time. You were hired a few years back, and you're doing an outstanding job. And you're from the state of Kansas.
Yes, sir.
And sometimes I've been calling him Kansas for four years. I forget his name. I'll be very honest with you. And it's just, I call people by their nicknames, and sometimes I get caught in my own trap. But his name is after a famous boulder. What is it?
Web.
I told you that, see? Congratulations to you. I'd like to make a comment on what it is.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Council. Thank you for taking this moment to recognize how important water is in our lives. So many times we wake up in the morning and never give a second thought to water, but we use it all day long to brush our teeth, take our showers, take a drink of cool water, wash the dog, go swimming, wash the dishes. We use water all day long. So providing this precious resource is an essential city service, and an important part of moving forward with providing this service is including water reuse in our plan to make sure that for generations to come, we have an ample, safe water supply. So thank you very much.
Don't forget, his full name is Chuck Weber. And please, since we're here, one second. Explain if you can, and this was never rehearsed or practiced, what does the reclaim mean to the area's future growth for not only this area, but for the state of Florida?
Well, you know, water reuse so far has been really focused on irrigation, and that's worked well. It has advantages and disadvantages. One of the other ways to reuse water is with potable reuse. And you may ask why you need to do potable reuse in an area that gets plenty of rainfall. And the bottom line is that it only rains for a little while during the year. Most of the months it's very dry, and it's during those times that we need to use alternative resources like potable reuse.
And not only that, and I hate to take my time, but it's a very important issue coming up long-term. The same water that we've had for 300 million years is the same water we're drinking. Problem is that we, the humans, keep growing in population, and the grass gets greener, and the supply-demand gets off-tilted, and that's why you're looking at this reuse program to possibly use it for drinking water in the future. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Congratulations on your Water Department, one of the most outstanding Water Departments in the country. And how many times is the water test of the year?
Thousands.
Thank you very much. The next presentation to the City Tampa Water Department is for the drinking water side. That was for the reuse side, and this is from May 5th through May 11th of 2019, and it's concerning the resource of water use and the uses of water, and why we have the Water Department, and it's such an important thing that we need. And this council would certainly have to address sometime within the next day, today, starting today, to the next four years when our term expires. What does it mean? Last year, we had 1,201 water breaks in the city of Tampa. That means we spend resources, water that was already treated, and a lot of resources, capital resources, to replace, not to replace, sorry, to repair and not replace the system. And we're falling short of that. And since I'm in that subject matter, we had over $9 million spent last year in just replacing trusery treatment lines. So this council and this new administration are going to have to deal with something in excess of $3 billion repaired in the next 20 years. And with that thoughtful, nice morning talk, I appreciate your concern, and I want to thank you for the successful story of Tampa Water. I know your main source is the Hillsborough River, but what you've done and the city of Tampa, all the employees in the city, from the administration on down to truck drivers to repairmen, to people that work at the plant, to people that test the water, we want to say thank you very much for giving us a resource that is truly one of the greatest assets we can have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Councilman Dean Felder had a comment.
Good morning, sir. How are you? Kansas, is it? Anyway, Chuck, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Chuck, so years back, we did the STAR program, obviously before you were here, but which was the irrigation system mainly in South Tampa. I know at that time, under some of the previous administrations, we had explored STAR II as the next phase. I'm not going to get into it this morning. Obviously, it's off-agenda, but as long as you're here, I'd like to request that you perhaps come brief us in a workshop on the feasibility and aspects of STAR II, and whether or not that would fit into some existing workshop is fine, whenever you can fit it in. But I think, I think we should look at irrigation as a possibility. I know there are other possibilities that the administration's exploring, and I'm not making any decisions on any of that, but I'd like to be, I think I'd like all of us to be briefed on all of the options, including irrigation. And I mean, it's appropriate because you're talking about reuse. It's the reuse week, and obviously irrigation is working in a big way in Pinellas and in a much smaller way in Tampa, so.
Yes, sir. We'd be happy to brief you on that and have more discussions about it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Next, I gotta do a commendation. It's a real good pleasure to see you this morning. I have a commendation that I will give to a nice young woman by the name of Ms. Rachel Barcelonan. Barcelona, come up here, Rachel, if you don't mind. This nice young woman is really one of the most impressive people I've ever met in my entire life. Rachel is not just a very accomplished model and literally an ambassador for our country for people with special needs, but Rachel is also in the spectrum of autism, something that she's very, very open about. If you look at her, many, many achievements that she's had, that includes Miss Southeast International, competing in the Miss International pageant, traveling to England for autism, speaks in Canada for the Global Autism Project, walking in New York fashion, serving as an international ambassador for the Unicorn Children's Foundation, being a board member of USF Center for Autism-Related Disabilities. I see Ms. Rover here. And speaking before the United Nations as a key speaker at the UN for World Autism Day. These are great achievements for anybody, but especially for somebody who has these very unique, special needs. Young Rachel was diagnosed with autism at the age of three after her parents noticed some developmental delays. We see here her proud father, Frank. There he is. Hey, Frank. I missed you there. She was diagnosed with autism at the age of three and had a lot of other challenges that come up naturally with this kind of challenge in life, things like dealing with bullying in school. Imagine the social awkwardness that we all have going through school, and then imagine going through that with a condition like autism. She suffered through seizures at the age of 11 and many other challenges that she's been so very open with, but yet with the help of her family, her faith, and just her basic ability to succeed, she has managed to do things that surely very few of us in this room can do. So for that and so much more, it is our real pleasure and honor to give Ms. Rachel Barcelonan a Tampa City Council commendation. If you want to say some words, Rachel, you may.
Well, thank you very much. It's such an honor, but I also must say that I've been to the Czech Republic for the Global Autism Project as well, and that is very much my passion because over in those parts of the world, autism is not known at all, and that is something that I strive to help with. And it's also an honor to be from the Tampa Bay area, and now Tampa Bay is a certified autism-friendly city. My heart beats with so much passion for that. This has been made possible by including individuals with autism in their ongoing efforts to increase acceptance in the community. Most importantly, all of the organizations that work so hard to understand that we as autistic individuals are not so different from all of you sitting in this room today. We are capable of anything, especially standing here to receive awards. So thank you to everybody. Well, I wanted to thank you to everyone who was newly-elected. I think that's a very, very big accomplishment, and I'm very proud of everybody. Thank you to Louie Viera, oh, the city of Tampa, our new mayor, Jane Castor, who's unfortunately not here today. I'm very disappointed because I love her so much. And Julie Reyes, the founder of Diversity Action Coalition, an organization that I'm very fond of. I look forward to working with you all in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll go outside. Councilman Gudes.
Oh, Rachel. Councilman Gudes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As a person who's worked with children all my life, I understand. Sometimes people don't understand.
Yes.
And I'm glad that Chairman Viera had started a good thing out of New Tampa with the autism part. I want to see something like that in my district. A lot of people don't know in my district, we lack a lot of things, and I want to see your coalition and some groups start coming to the east side of town and helping our young people, which need it, and I look forward to hoping to work with you in the future. I thank you again, Councilman.
Yes, sir.
All right. Anybody else? Councilman Carlson?
Thank you for inspiring us this morning, and we need more people who can inspire others, so I hope to see you continue to do that in the future. I look forward to seeing your success.
Councilman Seater?
Ms. Barcelonan, I congratulate you on the wonderful things that you've already achieved, but we did not know that you're also an operatic singer.
Yeah.
And that you were striving to become Miss Florida and hopefully Miss USA.
Yes.
I wish you well in all your endeavors. You've accomplished so much, and remember that hard work and perseverance does pay off. Congratulations.
It does. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, we'll go to public comment. We have three minutes allotted for anyone that wishes to speak on any item on the agenda. Please approach the lectern, state your name and address. Thank you.
Good morning. Connie Burton, Tampa. First, congratulations to all of you. And in the prayer this morning, and the mention by the minister, the accomplishment of great men's that was, that I still mention, you know, through Bible verses. What inspired me is that these men's had, what I don't see up there, but I'm not frightened because I don't see it, is a woman. A woman in their life, a mother, hopefully sisters, aunties, and so their inspiration had to be built off, they had to do good by all. On this agenda this morning, and I know you knew this the first day, item number 36. Getting a report from staff about homelessness that I hope will be inclusive, that we, it don't end up being number 36, but it becomes number one in your thought process of how we gonna deal with this issue of homelessness in the city of Tampa. Homelessness and housing for working-class poor people, I can't even say affordable no more because that's been hijacked. It's hijacked based on people who can make a million dollars, $400,000, and now, poor people are now being pushed into centers, pushed into hotels, where they're paying up to $60 a night just to try to make it. And so I hope this report be inclusive of all of that that we are seeing, especially in East Tampa. Places that would have been out of business had it not been based on a homeless population of people trying to scrape up day by day, $60, $50, and then for breakfast, the children are eating cookies. And so there's a crisis in this city, and hopefully, I'm hoping that this group here would turn the page, that when you're dealing with developers, you make them accountable. Real quickly, yesterday, we had almost an unfortunate situation in our community. New people coming in, welcome them, hey, whoever can afford to live there, let them do it. I saw a man chasing, attempting to chase some children with a hammer because of not being sensitive enough, of knowing that children do do awkward things and need punishment, but not by a hammer. And had it not been by the intervention of other women, I would hate to see what the headlines would have been this morning. And so we are just, right now inside of East Tampa, because that's what I love so dearly, we are seeing a tremendous change, but we don't plan on going anywhere. We're gonna welcome new people, but as they're coming in, they have to be welcoming to the community that's already there. So thank you this morning, and welcome to your new position.
Thank you very much. Councilman Gudes?
Ms. Burton, I know you've been a longtime activist in our community, what we call a soldier at times, and it's ironic, things just happen for a reason. When you talked about homelessness just now, I was at my business last night, and someone called and said, "Meet me at the gyro shop for some dinner." And I went there, saw a young lady, might as about 25 years old, had a carriage with a baby, maybe a year old, had another toddler, maybe three years old with her. And as I sat eating my meal, I watched this young lady with her children sitting there. And in her mind, she was hoping somebody would give a handout to help her because the young toddler kept looking, pointing at the food of everyone in the restaurant. Me being a person dealing with children all the time, I knew that child was hungry. I knew that person was homeless. And so I say to you, that is one of my fights. And on the campaign trail, most of all these councilmen here talked about those issues. And I hope they stay true to the commitment, what they told the voters, in dealing with those issues. But what I would like you to do, my aide is next door, if you would go over and send a phone, I'd like to meet with you and talk about some of those issues that you're talking about, if you would please. And thank you for coming up to us.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Councilman?
Thank you, Connie. Ms. Burton?
Yes, sir.
Hi. Good morning.
Good morning.
And thank you for your kind words about our beginning. I just wanted to point out, I pulled items 29 and 30 specifically because they address not homelessness per se, but affordable housing that we are doing in the city. Obviously, we're not doing enough. Maybe we'll never do enough, but I wanted to pull those items so we could start having a discussion on that. I just wanted you to be aware that we'll have a little bit of discussion on that later in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Mentor's not Tampa, Florida. I want to welcome the new people and also send a shout-out to the young lady that spoke and received the commendation. Young lady spoke very eloquently and was very representative of something that she's passionate about, and that's good. It's always good to see young people doing something progressive, and it's always good to see progress. Seeing seven men sitting representing the city, that's not progress. It's not. I don't know if you need to expand it so it could be more inclusive, but that's not progress. Seeing men in 2019, we're on the way to 2020, having women bring them drinks and coffee and notes or whatsoever in those cups, that's offensive. It's offensive to see someone get into work at 10 o'clock AM in the morning, or at 9 o'clock in the morning, and at 9:01 or 9:02 or 9:03 or 9:15 or 10:15, a woman's bringing them something to drink. That's so throwback. That's something you need to discontinue altogether. It's offensive. I've got daughters, and I've got a mother, and I've got aunties, and I come from a slave background, and it's offensive just when you see it. It's offensive. We're 26% of this population, and how we're treated, what's allocated for us on this budget from week, from week to week, I've been coming down here for 25 years or more, and they say, "No one's listening, no one pays you any attention," and it's the truth. But what you supposed to do? Quit? No, I'm not a quitter. The things that you see here is offensive. The way the police treat us inside our communities, it's offensive. It's dehumanizing. It's degrading. These are the things that need to be addressed. These are the things that need to be addressed. Year after year, decade after decade, you hear the same thing. Eight years of Nixon, eight years of Reagan, eight years of Bush, eight years of Clinton, eight years of Obama, not eight years of Trump. Make America Great Again, gentrification, it all leads to the same path. Make America Great Again, and Venezuela trying to get free oil, the oil barons trying to get free oil. Make the city of Tampa the next great city, gentrification. It's all the same thing, a certain kind of hatred for poor and working-class people, a certain kind of hatred for African people. It's a certain kind of hatred, and this right here can break the hatred. The mayor of the city of Tampa went out his last few weeks on the job with a nasty, racist, offensive tweet. He was tweeting that. They say, "No, it was hacked." No, his finger pushed the wrong button. And now that clown is out of here, and his protege is in. That need to change. That system need to change.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Chairman Viera, my name is Mario Nunez, 15022 Rocky Ledge, Tampa. See if I can offer a little bit more of a palate cleanser going forward, and just open my comments by saying congratulations first and foremost to the newly-seated members. Salute and happy days on behalf of everybody who is involved in Tampa business, especially those that watch, that watch the Tampa Native Show and participate in that endeavor. It was fun to watch the entire process play out. To the victor go the spoils, and you guys are in the seat. I would be remiss if I didn't at least acknowledge what the gentleman previously had said. It is kind of a homogenous crew up there, and maybe a lady's touch would have been nice. It didn't happen this time around, perhaps next time. But I'm not here to address that. I'm here to say that as we go forward with our new mayor and our new administration and the aide team that's assembled, we should probably look towards, you know, a branding of what we might consider identifying ourselves as in the near future, and how we project ourselves to the rest of the state of Florida, the region of the southeast, the nation. I recently had the good fortune of joining the Board of Directors with the Sister Cities Organization under the auspices of the city of Tampa, and I'm their communications director. In addition to being the host and creator of the Tampa Native Show, so these things are all present in my life at the current time. Many of you have heard me spoke, speak about the issue. If you just look atop my head, you'll probably get the point. But I'm just, I'm not here to call anything to action. I'm not here to put any motions on the floor. I'm just here basically to say, I'm as excited as everybody else was at Armature Works yesterday. That was a love fest, and I'm so sorry that I wasn't able to be there in person. I probably would have got locked out into the overflow room because it was standing room only. As it turns out, the people that were in the overflow room were watching it on a giant TV screen, and so was I. It just happened to me in my bedroom watching it on my TV. But it was amazing. I was uplifted. I can tell there was a genuine sense of positivity of what might be coming around the next corner. You guys are in charge of kind of hand-on-the-tilt guiding us through those waters, right? Of course, with our mayor's guidance as well. And, you know, that's a female, so I guess we can, we can look to, you know, we can kind of balance the tables a little bit there. But again, I'm here to say congratulations, and I'm also here to say, and many of you have been on the Tampa Native Show, many of you, most of you, only a couple of you haven't, to be quite honest. I want to offer the open invitation at any time to come on the show. You know, 80% of the people that view the show, that appraise the show, and appreciate the show, and love the show are your constituents. They're arguably the tail that wags the dog, and 80% of them vote. So if anytime you guys have an issue, you want to connect with your constituents directly, feel free to come and use the Tampa Native Show as an opportunity to voice your concerns or call to action. That door is always open to you guys. So on behalf of the Tampa Native Show and all her fans, salute and happy days. Great job, guys. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
And Mario, you're a great Tampanian.
Yeah, yeah. And a pretty good Tampanian, too.
Thank you. Next, please. Thank you, sir.
Morning. Congratulations, all. Good to see you. Look forward to working with all of you on, I'm sorry, my name's Taylor Ralph. Look forward to working with you on potentially updating the green building ordinance to bring it up to current stature, status, working on creating a more healthy, inclusive, equitable community. I think one quick comment about affordable housing. Affordable housing isn't just about the home where people live, it's actually about creating affordable lifestyles and providing people access to mass transit that is effective and regularly served, and they can get there safely by walking or biking without being fearful of being hit by a car. And unfortunately, we live in a city and a county that's one of the most dangerous places in the country for walking and biking, and I'm here to bring up a current project that you all can affect today, and that's Bay to Bay Boulevard. The project has been going on for a long time. It's probably one of the most hotly contested projects in our city. There's been more... There's been more, uh, public outcry over the decisions that our previous mayor made on that road than any other project. We had over a hundred and twenty neighbors, uh, community members walk along the street to protest the mayor's decision to leave the road as is, as a four-lane highway. We have had four hundred and sixty-plus petitioners sign, asking the mayor to rethink his decision and to reconsider the project and allow for more public input and more, uh, community building to, uh, provide the right things and, and bring more safety features and bring the community together to create the project that everyone wants. Bay to Bay is a road that has three schools on either side of it, multiple churches, multiple small businesses. It is a road that compels people to walk and bike, to do things that they want to do in their community. And right now, our business owners are having to lock the door on, along Bay to Bay because it is so unsafe. The road has been repaved, but there still is a last layer of, of asphalt that has not been laid. And all we're simply asking is for us to be able to come together and to talk about the striping plan for that road. We're not asking to change anything. The sidewalks have been improved, that's great. The road has been repaved, everyone's happy, but unfortunately, we're seeing a lot of speeding. There's been multiple accidents and crashes along the corridor. Families are walking along Bay to Bay more than ever before because there's an ice cream shop, and there's Cappy's, and there's churches, and there's schools, and people have to walk to school, people want to walk to school, but this road is a, a danger to our community. Trucks are speeding down it, cars are speeding down it, and we need help. I'm asking you today to please consider asking the mayor to delay the project or just allow the community to come together one more time to understand what the project is because it's been a black hole. The county commission and the city council voted unanimously to ask the mayor to do that on February twentieth and February twenty-first of this year. Please support the last council and last commission's request, and let's get this right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, anyone else here for public comment? Okay. Uh, any requests by the public for reconsideration of legislative matters? Okay, being none apparent here, we go on to committee reports and consent agenda items. Um, I will, we will be assigning, obviously, committee chairs, et cetera, so what I will do right now is just begin to my right with our returning veteran, Councilman Dingfelder. If you could, or strike that, actually. Forget it, I'm sorry. We're going to an ordinance. Um, is anyone here from the staff on ordinance number, uh, on item number three?
Rebecca Kurt, legal department. Item three is an item presented for first reading. These are not notice public hearings, they're just here for first reading, so you don't typically have a staff report. This one in particular is a Scrivener's error because when you approved the previous avalore for, um, a tax exemption for historic property, we did not include the, um, detailed legal description, so this is just to attach the legal description for the address that was already contained in the original ordinance.
Okay. Uh, so we do not hear public comments on this issue, correct? Okay, great. Uh, Councilman Dingfelder, would you please, sir, take item number three?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'll move an ordinance, amending ordinance number twenty nineteen dash fifty, passed and ordained by the city council of the city of Tampa on April fourth, twenty nineteen, correcting a Scrivener's error for an avalore for property located at nineteen to North Avenida Republica de Cuba, by atta, sorry about that Spanish. By attaching exhibit A legal description, providing severability, providing an effective date.
We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, that was the first reading, and second reading adoption will be held on June sixth, twenty nineteen, at nine thirty AM.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next, item number four. Is anybody from here, go ahead.
Rebecca Kurt, legal department. Item four is also an item here for first reading, and is also not, um, a public hearing, so you will not have a staff report. You will have a full staff report at your second reading. This is actually a new historic preservation property tax exemption application, um, and again, you will have your full staff report at the public hearing.
Okay. Um, if you could, please, Councilman Carlson, please, uh, read item number four, sir.
In order to approving an historic preservation property tax exemption application relative to the restoration, renovation, or rehabilitation of certain property owned by Ibor Baradero LLC located at nineteen fifteen North Avenida Republica de Cuba, Tampa, Florida, in the Ibor City National Historic Landmark District, based on certain findings, providing for notice to the property appraiser of Hillsborough County, providing for severability, providing for repeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing an effective.
We have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we go to.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, second reading adoption will be held on June sixth, nineteen, twenty nineteen, at nine thirty AM.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we go to committee reports. Uh, Councilman, uh, Maniscalco, if you could take public safety and of course exclude item number seven.
I'd like to move items five and six, excluding number seven because it has been pulled for discussion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman, uh, Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Councilman Citro, if you could please take Parks, Recreation, and Cultural, sir.
I moved that items eight through twelve, uh, be moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, Councilman Miranda, if you could take the next, items three through thirty-three, excluding sixteen, eighteen, twenty-nine, and thirty, sir.
Thank you. I move, uh, Public Works Committee, items thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, uh, seventeen, nineteen, and twenty, excluding, uh, sixteen and eighteen.
Sir.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Miranda's.
I went to the wrong, I went all the way to Finance Committee, I apologize.
Yeah, I'm sorry. My, my paper was put in wrong, that was my bad.
Excluding item number sixteen. So I move fifteen through, excuse me, thirteen through seventeen, excluding sixteen.
We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Um, now I'm, let's see, five through, okay, there you go, I'm sorry. Uh, Public Works, um, items thirteen through seventeen, uh, Councilman Goode, if you could take those, sir.
Move items thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, seventeen, exclude sixteen.
I'm sorry.
We already did that.
Okay, I'm sorry. This, this is, okay, I'm sorry. Finance, if you could take items eighteen through twenty.
Make, make, exclude number eighteen and move nineteen through twenty.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Goode, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Um, next here, I see Building Zoning Preservation, items twenty-one through thirty-two. Um, Councilman, uh, Dingfelder.
Move items twenty-nine, thirty. Move items twenty-one through thirty-two, excluding twenty-nine and thirty.
We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we move to committee reports, consent agenda items continued. Uh, we're going to move to item number twenty-five. Who is here for that one?
Mr. Chairman, I think we missed thirty-three. Transportation. Thirty-three, it was transportation.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, um, my, okay, I'm sorry, this has been put in wrong. Uh, Transportation, item number thirty-three, Councilman Carlson, if you could take that.
Uh, I don't have to read it. No, I'd like to move that we pass, uh, item number thirty.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we move to item number thirty-four, and I'm correct here to quasi-judicial proceedings.
That's ten thirty.
Oh, um, okay, so it's not ten thirty yet, so we will move now to items being removed from the consent agenda, if any, and we have seven, sixteen, eighteen, twenty-nine, and thirty. Is anyone here on any of these items from staff? If you could come forward, one at a time, and state the item that you're on.
Uh, Patrick Messmer, Tampa Police, I'm here on item number seven.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to just ask my question and?
Sure.
Speed things up?
Yes, sure.
Okay. Um, good morning. Your name's?
Lieutenant Patrick Messmer with Special Operations, TPD.
Good morning, Lieutenant. Thanks for joining us.
Sure.
So, um, this, this item, uh, just on its face is, um, six hundred thousand dollar and change, uh, item for a new camera for the, to hang on the bottom of the helicopter, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, um, a, a couple of things, and I apologize, typically, if given more time, we just got sworn in yesterday, if given more time, I would have actually had this conversation in advance and maybe alleviated the need for you to even come here, so we'll try and do that in the future. I usually do. Um, you, you guys pulled, you, um, you awarded the item, but you threw out the first, first bidder, so let's deal with that first.
Okay. So, um, one of our requirements in the bid was that the facility for the installation be within thirty nautical mile, nautical mile radius of Tampa International Airport, which is where we have our aviation unit. There was a bidder, I believe they were three thousand dollars cheaper, but they are a hundred and twenty nautical miles from the airport on the east coast of Florida in Melbourne. So the issue with that is that we have to fly our helicopter to that facility. Our helicopters cost about six hundred and fifty dollars an hour to operate, so we would have to fly a helicopter there to drop off, we'd have to have another helicopter to, to bring the crew back, and then we'd have to go back a second time to pick it up. The bigger issue, though, is, is that we've seen with these major projects with the helicopters, um, there, there tend to be minor issues that we end up having to address with repair. So if we keep having to ferry the helicopter back and forth to the east coast, it's going to eventually cost the city a lot more money in fuel and, and maintenance expenses because our maintenance and everything is based on hours. And if we're spending all these hours transporting helicopters to the east coast, that means that we're not going to be available to answer calls for service within the city of Tampa.
So when I read that, it made perfect senge, sense. Um, what I was curious about was, and, and maybe there's something else here that's not in the paperwork, uh, it appeared that the successful, proposed successful bidder, um, and I come from a purchasing background, as, as Greg knows, but the, the successful bidder was, shows a Brooksville address.
Correct.
Um, and when I Googled up, as we all do, uh, Brooksville, and my dad used to live up there, um, it, it showed it, and specifically to that address, it showed it as approximately forty-two miles, regular miles. When I translated that into nautical miles, it came out to thirty-six nautical miles. Now, Mr. Shelby always advises us to avoid litigation. It concerns me that even though it's a great idea to be within thirty miles, that that Brooksville facility, um, is, is, is actually thirty-six nautical miles. Um, was there, am I missing something there?
Uh, my understanding, was that a straight-line distance that you looked at?
It was a Google distance.
So, so it would be taking roadways, not by taking?
No, no, no. I think it, it was, I, it's, I just said, "What is the distance?" I don't know if that was, was that. But, but you're, you're right, maybe it Googles, takes, takes you on the highway, but I don't know. To me, Brooksville is not really thirty-six miles, but it, you know, might be close.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if their address was specifically the, the, the airport, or if that was the headquarters of the facility. Um, I, I know it was looked at with purchasing, I didn't personally.
I think, I think it's important enough because it's six hundred thousand dollars, and we don't want to be sued by the, the lowest bidder. It's important enough to, if I could ask, Mr. Chairman, we'll, we can defer, uh, you know, two weeks, uh, for y'all to come back. Mr. Spearmen's joining us in a second, but, uh.
He could probably answer because there was a protest, and I know that protest was addressed.
And then the other question is sort of a, maybe a bigger picture question, and, and maybe to either one of you. In regard to, s, the ci, in the city, sometimes we lease thing, big-ticket items. As a matter of fact, later on the agenda, we talk about leasing a street sweeper, um, instead of buying one. And, uh, my wife is the technical person in, in our household, but she actually asked this question, too. She said, "You know, we have cameras in our house, you know, that four or five years later are obsolete because of technology." Bill's much more technical than I am, but the technology changes, um, and, and then these things become obsolete. But in this case, we're actually buying the six hundred thousand dollar, very, very high-tech camera, as opposed to looking, you know, have, did we look into leasing this?
Correct. And I think that if we were actually spending city money for this, that would be a, a very appropriate thing to do. However, this is, uh, grant-funded through UASI, the Urban Area Security Initiative, which is a state program that uses federal, uh, Department of Homeland Security money. So there's no expenditure on the part of the city for this.
Well, do they, do they allow a lease, uh, lease payments through UASI?
They, they do not, to my knowledge.
Okay.
We, we've never leased anything through UASI because, you know, the federal government gives us the money so we can own the asset. You know, at the end of the lease, we would have to give that asset back.
That, that's a, a good answer for, for that one. Okay, Mr. Spearmen.
Good morning, Councilor Greg Spearmen, Director of Purchasing. To address your concern, uh, Councilman Dingfelder regarding whether or not the city will be sued, that is unlikely. The, uh, low bidder did file an appeal, the city did respond to that, uh, I'm sorry, protest, and the city did respond to the protest, but the bidder did not appeal. So in all practical purposes, uh, there is no opportunity for the.
Well, yeah, but we still want to do the right thing, Greg. I mean, if the bid said thirty, thirty nautical miles.
That is correct.
I think we need to put a tape measure on it, i- if nobody had. Sometimes the bidder just says, "I comply."
Right.
With that, and then we sort of glance at it and, and assume it's okay.
Right.
But I think it's important enough just to make sure we're doing the right thing, and we're, we could save three thousand dollars, whatever.
Right.
Uh, just looking at it for two weeks. So, uh, unless there's some other urgency that I'm not aware of, uh.
That, that would be up to the police department, Councilman Dingfelder. Uh, we took the information provided to us in the specifications, and that's what we published. Uh, we did not physically check the mileage ourselves, uh, but we.
I'm not suggesting anybody flies it, but I, but I think we can put a, a, put a, you know, a measure on it and just make sure. But that, that's, uh, that's up to council, you know, if, I, I'd request a deferral of two weeks, uh, to come back and look at that.
And, and let me ask a question, if I may, to the officer, sir, if I may. Um, the two weeks requested, will that in any way endanger any of our public safety operations, or in any way cause any major structural inconvenience to Tampa Police Department? I know Councilman Goode's, I think, also wanted to speak. Or maybe you have to make that call to inquire on that?
No, I, I don't believe that it would, delaying it by two weeks would, would be an issue.
Okay. Councilman Goode's.
It's a lot of money, six hundred thousand dollars. The, what is this system supposed to do, number one? And the bidder that lost the bid or filed an protest, are the specs different, what they have, uh, from what this other company is, is, is bidding on, or are they comparable?
So the, um, it, it was basically the same product. The only difference is the distance that we're going to have to travel for, for installation and, and repairs. Uh, that was the only difference between the two bidders. So that, that three thousand dollar difference in the price, it's, it's going to be recouped with, with our expenses to, to have to fly the helicopters back and forth. Um, as to your other question, so our, our current gyro camera systems, they were purchased in nineteen ninety-nine, so they have nineteen ninety-nine standard definition video. Uh, these are state-of-the-art, high-definition cameras. Um, they have high-definition thermal imaging as well, so, uh, our helicopters can actually be higher, which would alleviate a lot of the noise for, for the residents in the area that the helicopter's flying over. In addition, the, the cameras are much better, so they could actually see, uh, whether or not somebody is, is holding a firearm in their hand. Our current, current cameras can't do that because they're standard definition. They could read a, a tag, for example, if we're looking for a specific vehicle that's been used in a robbery, um, at this point, we can just look and see based on color or vehicle type, maybe that's the vehicle. With the new camera system, we'll actually be able to zoom in and, and see the tag of that vehicle. So it's, it's a much more advanced system, it's, it's much more modern, and unfortunately, due to the age of our current systems, uh, we're not able to upgrade them to high definition.
And, and will this cause then a two-week delay in our being able to have these advanced cameras? cameras?
Yeah, it's going to cause a delay. It's, obviously, we, you know, the letter's been signed, and we can begin installation, you know, as soon as council gives the approval. I just checked on my, on Air Nav, which is the system that we use to use straight-line distances between airports, and it is 30 miles between Brooksville, Tampa Bay Regional, and Tampa Bay National.
And Councilman...
Isn't that airport near 19, US 19?
Brooksville Regional, let me see. I've never flown up there, so I'm not sure...
I haven't flown there either, because...
I can pull it up on the...
The state of Florida sets me up a place called Gretna. It's a real big, thriving city that I go once in a while, and I pass by that airport right to the right there. It's not in the city of Brooksville at all.
It looks like it is next to a, I'm looking at the aeronautical chart, so it doesn't tell me what roadway it is, but it is between a couple major roadways. So, I would say that would probably be, maybe the Sun Coast?
It's on 50th and Sun Coast.
Yeah, Sun Coast, and right as you come off.
Okay. And Councilman Dingfelder, what is it, I mean, are you looking at a monetary savings for this two-week delay, or...
No, I'm looking at actually us doing things by the book, because the bid, $600,000 bid, spoke to 30 nautical miles. If the lieutenant wants to specifically and expressly say that he's, he can testify that it's 30 nautical miles or less from there to there, then I could accept that. But I don't know if you're in a position to say that based upon your quick glance at it, you know. And so, you know, I just think, and I'm glad our city attorney is here, because these are important matters. It doesn't matter if it's a $600,000 item, or, you know, the public relies on us to put out these bids and go by the book in terms of what they said. We threw out a bidder based upon not being within 30 nautical miles, and that's fine. I'm not suggesting we fly across the state. Ultimately, if, let's say it's 35 nautical miles to Brooksville, staff would probably come back and say, "We're going to waive that bid condition." And then, council would say, "Okay, we'll agree with that." And then, we'd waive the bid condition, and then we'd move on and award it. But, you know, I just think that, like I say, the city and our people and all the vendors tell us that, you know, they rely on us to do things according to the bid specs, and...
Sal Trado, Legal Department, he checked with the navigational system. As you know, I was in air traffic control at one time, so the navigational system is saying 30 miles, 30 nautical miles, that's correct. When you go to Google, you're going to get street miles, and it's going to be a little bit longer there, obviously, because you have turns to go. So, if he used the navigational, excuse me, what is this turned off? I apologize for that.
That must be Google calling.
They're calling me and saying, "No, it's 32 miles."
One mile.
Yeah. Yeah, so if he's using a navigational directional source of information, that is correct, the 30 nautical miles is air miles, as opposed to 36 street miles.
If our city attorney's comfortable with it...
I am.
...with his history, and if the lieutenant wants to confirm that, I'm comfortable with it. But I have one other question, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate your indulgence. Again, this goes back to my purchasing background, Greg, and I have many conversations about these sort of things. When I read through the specs, it clearly looked like the department was specking a specific camera, because there's 15 or 20 line items that are very detailed to, you know, it looks like, okay, let's look at the specs for that camera, and let's put it into our bid. I'm not necessarily criticizing you or the department on doing that, I just, I'm just wondering, and Greg, maybe you want to answer this, is that what we're doing here? If it is, why didn't we just sole-source it, you know, and say, "We want, you know, XYZ camera," and then let these bidders specifically, you know, go for XYZ camera, and then you could tell us why that XYZ camera is the best one, and not why we sole-sourced it? So, Greg, you probably want to answer that. That's sort of a big-picture purchasing question.
Greg Spearman, Personnel Director, we rely upon our users, Councilman Dingfelder, in this case, the Police Department, to really tell us in terms of what is best to meet their needs. Now, in this particular instance, we did spec a particular camera, but we knew that there was competition available on it. So, rather than open it up to a very broad field, and have lots of things that will come in that would not meet their needs, and have to disqualify a lot of companies, it's probably more applicable to narrow in closely in terms of what you want, but within a realm of be able to get in competition. And I think that's what we achieved in this case, except that the low bidder denied me the 30 nautical mile requirement.
All right, thanks.
And one of the other issues with that, too, is, so this was purchased with the, this is going to be purchased with UASI funding, so in 2017, the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office obtained the same camera through UASI funding as well. So, since UASI is a regional group, there is a possibility, if there were to be a major incident or something, we could borrow the Sheriff's Office cameras and install it on one of our helicopters. Same thing would happen if something happened in the county, and they needed to use our camera for something. They're interchangeable, so having a different camera would have kind of negated that whole thing as well.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir, for your time this morning. We appreciate it. Yes, sir, Councilman. Next, we're on to item number 16, and...
I'm sorry, Mr. Shelby.
No, I just, what's council's pleasure with regard to that item?
I don't think...
I withdrew the motion.
Yeah, no motion was made, correct?
Oh, I'll go ahead and move, I'll move to approve, move to approve item seven. Thank you, Mr. Shelby.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder. Who seconded that?
I did.
Okay, Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir. Next, we're on to item 16. Mr. Eric Weiss is here.
Eric Weiss, Waste Water Department Director, here to answer any questions you have on this item.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Weiss. And my questions relate to item 16 and 18. And again, Mr. Spearman, I'm glad you're still here. Item 16 is, it's a $33,000 change, but I think ultimately, this was a $320,000 contract for concrete work, and at one of the pumping stations. Concrete repairs and that sort of thing. It appears on item 16 that there was some reference to MBE, or SBE, you know, minority business or small business, that there was no participation on item 16. And item 18, to the city's, complimenting the city, it appeared that there was some sheltered market participation and solicitation. I don't think item 18 is actually yours. But, so gentlemen, on item 16, why would we have done $320,000 of concrete work, which seems to me, just in my, with my limited knowledge, could be something that we could get a subcontractor in from the community, perhaps in minority business community, to assist with that type of work?
Yeah. On this contract, this is a highly specialized concrete work and coating system, where you have to be certified from the manufacturer, because of the highly corrosive atmosphere in a pumping station. So, we got four bidders, and they had to have that certification to be qualified. So, before the bid, when we sat down with the MBE office, there were, fortunately, no MBEs that had that certification.
Is it possible that we could have included a subcontract component to that, to try and achieve some of our goals, and eventually, you know, obviously, we're sitting here as a new body, but, you know, I want to talk about those goals as well?
But typically, we do, but it was so highly specialized that that firm did it all. You know, they go in there, they have the expertise to chip away the concrete, evaluate the depth of it, and then decide how much of this engineered coating product you put on. So, and there were no identified WMEs to do that.
No.
Or break up any of that work, because that was the work.
Well, okay. I'll keep asking that question as we proceed on these types of items for the next four years, so let's see if there's greater opportunity to include subcontractors, you know, on picking up just the periphery, not the technical. You explained that very well, there's a highly technical component to this, that we obviously don't want to risk or jeopardize, that we can't risk or jeopardize. But if there's peripheral stuff going on, maybe the subs can help.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions from council on this item? Okay, Councilman Dingfelder, would you like to move that item?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Thank you again for your indulgence. I'll move items, item 16. Item 16.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
Next, we move to item number 18 for Mr. Spearman.
I want to, Councilor Greg Spearman, Purchasing Director, here to answer any questions you might have on item number 18.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Greg, so this is the flip side of that earlier question. It appears that on item 18, we are looking to go out, and we have looked to go out into the community with SBE, or, I don't know if it's MBE, but it appears to be SBE and sheltered market. Could you explain a little bit about what we've done, and why we've done it, and how successful that is?
Well, unlike the discussion we just had, this particular solicitation did have one, two, three, four, five potential bidders. And so, this was sheltered as a recommendation by the Minority Business Development Office, and of course, that includes the five-county area that we look at in terms of our vendor pool. We did receive five bids, and RJ of Advertising, Inc., doing business with B&amp;B Sports, was successful. This was awarded in 2017 as a one-year contract with three one-year renewals, and so it's up for rebidding next year. So, we're basically asking council to approve the renewal of this particular contract.
All right, excellent. There's no other comments, I'll be glad to...
Anything further? Yes, sir.
I just want to say, I concur with Councilman Dingfelder about the participation of minority businesses. As we were on the campaign trail, over and over and over again, there were communities that came to us and said that they felt that they were not included, and it seems like the city does a good job, but anything that we can do to do even more, and also to communicate what we're doing, would be very helpful, and, you know, working with the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I wish, I mean, for new council members who may have any interest in this very important issue, you know, staff meetings can occur to inquire more on these issues. Councilman Dingfelder, you know, obviously, about this more certainly than I do, I would assume, being here for eight years, but for our new council members, Councilman Goode's.
You can call him back up, Greg, back to the podium for me.
Mr. Spearman, if you could, sir. One more question.
Yes.
I know B&amp;B well, I've done some business with them as well, and we have a lot of communities, small businesses that do this type of work. Are there any workshops in our communities, so people can actually know the process? I think that's a challenge sometimes, that we don't know to know, and I'd like to see somehow that the Purchasing Department go out in communities, so people can know and have workshops, so our vendors that are in our smaller communities know what the processes are, and know how to obtain these contracts. I feel that's a problem sometimes, they don't know how to obtain them.
Right. But Councilman Goode, we are actively involved in outreach to the community, and the community, that's really under the auspices of Gregory Hart, as the Minority Business Development Manager. We do give an orientation to newly certified firms that come to the city, but we have lots of information on the city's website, and that may be a discussion that we may want to have with Minority Business Development, in terms of additional outreach initiatives, but I do know that they're involved in those. I don't have the specific details, but I will relay the information back to him, that is a concern of this council.
That's a concern of me, heavily.
Yes. Right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Spearman. Okay, next, we move to item...
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yes, sir, Councilman.
I'm moving the item, but I did want to second what Mr. Goode's was saying, that we did hear in the community during, not the labor, but during the campaign process, that the city could be more proactive out in the community to help train people and get them involved. And I think that, I think that's important. We can't just wait here in the ivory tower and expect people to know how to do it. So, we should do that. I'll be glad to move item 18.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, we move to item 29 with Mr. Stelling, who's here.
Good morning, council. Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Dingfelder, welcome back.
What's your name again, sir?
Tom Stelling, Planning and Development Director. I'm here for items 29 and 30, and I brought, you don't go to a gunfight without your hired gun, so I certainly brought mine. Vanessa will be able to explain in detail any questions you might have. But generally, the item 29, it's our agreement with Rebuilding Together Tampa Bay, we've been partners with them for several years. They build over 20, 25 houses in Sulphur Springs. When Hurricane Irma came through, we amended his contract, so he could do specific home repair related to the disaster recovery in those neighborhoods, and now we basically are amending it back to continue with the program as he had it. So, I'll let Vanessa get up and...
Good morning. I'm a little under the weather, but I wanted to be here. My name's Vanessa McCleary, I'm the Housing and Community Development Manager for the city, and I am here to answer any questions you have on this item.
Councilman?
Good morning. Thank you for joining us, and thanks for the work you do. So, on items 29 and 30, and Mr. Stelling, I think, just answered part of my question on 29, in regard to, this particular vendor is constructing 20 to 25 homes a year, is that specifically with us and working with our grants and that sort of thing?
Yes. In 2014, we signed an agreement with Rebuild Together Tampa Bay to build homes in the Sulphur Springs area, and he's continuing to do that. We provided a million dollars and about 16 lots at that time. We have, as we acquire additional lots, we've provided those to him. He's also picked up additional lots, as we're trying to revitalize that area.
And is there a particular price point or price range that these homes end up coming out, and who is qualified? I saw, on one of these items, I saw reference to first responders and teachers and that sort of thing.
And that is the item 30, which is the Community Heroes Program for Sulphur Springs.
Okay, so on item 29, though...
On 29, his houses start at $140,000. When we first started building in that neighborhood, and I'm not good at this machine, let's see if I can get this.
Yeah, I got it.
His starts is, when we first started building in that neighborhood, we couldn't get the homes to value at the comp. So, we started selling the homes at about $80,000, and increasingly moved it up. It cost us $150,000 to build the home, but we were only able to sell it for $80,000, because it was such a depressed neighborhood. So, working in that area, we've been able to bring up the home values to where they really should be, which is at market. Now, they are selling between $140,000 and $180,000 in that neighborhood.
So, that's an interesting conundrum in regard to the 80 versus the 140, because I, I mean, I understand we don't want to lose money, per se...
We don't want to lose money, and we don't want to devalue neighborhoods.
We don't want to devalue the neighborhood, but at the same time, 80,000's a lot more affordable than 120, 140.
So, what we want to do is sell homes for what they are valued at. And if you devalue them, selling them at the 80 really hurts the neighborhood. Selling them at 140, and then giving them down payment assistance to bring it down to what people can afford, is how we've been moving forward. Because what we want to do is have all of our neighborhoods be neighborhoods of choice.
And what is the down payment assistance?
So, they offer, what we do is we layer the down payment assistance, so through the city, we provide the MAP program, which currently is providing $15,000 in down payment assistance. You can couple that with the state program that provides another $15,000, and then Rebuild Together Tampa Bay was putting another $15,000. So, that 140 now comes down to about $100,000 in terms of the mortgage that someone would have. So, instead of looking at the home price, we should look at the mortgage that the individual is getting.
My last question, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate it. In the big picture, because I know you probably have various programs that you're working with, different federal and state monies, as well as our local monies, do we have a goal in terms of each year, we're trying to build X number of homes of last year, let's say 2018 or 2019, you know, through all of these programs, adding them up? And what is that goal, and are we meeting it?
So, we have, we're trying to build capacity, because that's been our issue in terms of meeting our goals. One of the things that we have been really focused on is homeownership, because we have programs that provide rental assistance, but if we're providing rental assistance at $1,500 a month for 12 months, that's quite a bit of money. It'd be better to give a person that in down payment assistance, move them into a home where they can stabilize their housing costs...
Sure.
...as well as stabilizing the neighborhoods. So, our real goal has been to stabilize neighborhoods through homeownership. We have a number of goals, and we've been decreasing the number of homeless families. We have been...
But I'm looking specifically for quantity of homes that we're trying to build.
I would love to build 100 homes a year, if not more. I believe that we can do it, but currently, we have not had the capacity, which is why we have moved to working with for-profit builders, as well as nonprofit builders, and helping the nonprofit builders to increase their capacity.
So, our goal, or your hope, was sort of 100, we're not even there. I set out on the campaign trail that I'd like to see us have a goal of 1,000 homes a year. So, we'll have...
I am right there with you.
We'll have much more conversation on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilman Goode's.
What part of Sulphur Springs we talking about? Because I travel there every day, so I'd like to know where we building these homes in Sulphur Springs, because...
They are on scattered lots throughout Sulphur Springs.
And when you say $140,000, and I look at the people who are in that area, that's still a lot of money, gentlemen. I will be frank with you. And that's still a lot of money, $140,000 for that community, that's still, I mean, that's a lot for that community. That community is still very, very, very blighted. And I contend to tell this council, until we, as a city, start going in and cleaning up the streets and the trees, you're just throwing a home in a scattered place, you're going to have the same conditions. throwing a home in a scattered place, you're going to have the same conditions.
Now, we have been doing a lot of that cleanup. We took out tons and tons of trash out of that community. We're continuing to clear lots. It is, that community did not become blighted overnight, and so we're not going to revitalize it overnight, but we are working diligently with, through Rebuild Together Tampa Bay and them building homes. We have additional builders that have gone in and have been rehabbing as well as building additional single-family homes in that neighborhood. So we are starting to see areas of that neighborhood turning around, and we can provide you with the addresses of where those homes were built. We can provide you with the articles and the newspaper clippings regarding the changes that have happened. We have changed the school, used to be K through three, and now it's K through eight, and that was part of that revitalization effort. We've gotten a number of nonprofits working in that area, working with the families, because we don't want to gentrify, and so we're trying to get families within that neighborhood to move from renters to homeowners, as well as moving new families in with different incomes.
I'm great with the idea of getting away with renting and people have ownership. I started my career at Thirteenth and Waters Avenue, where it was a seven-eleven, and that was Sulphur Springs Elementary, and they have done some things to that school. It's still a failing school because the area is still transient. We have to look at a way to stop the transient. I think with getting homeownership, that'll stop some of that, but I still contend, you know, I know the market and how the market is high right now, but we've still got to find some other ways to get people qualified and into homes at a cheaper price, because still that area is, still has a lot of issues.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else? Okay, and I thank you for your presentation. I think if I hear something from this council today, it's that we want to invest in our neighborhoods on issues like diversity and pluralism and hiring, on issues like housing, et cetera. I second Councilman Goode's comments with regards to Sulphur Springs. I think that's an area that is prime not for redevelopment, that's a term that sometimes has negative effects on lower-income communities, but on reinvestment, there's a big difference. That's an area with a lot of potential, a lot of potential with the communities and neighborhoods right there in Sulphur Springs, and I think that this is a good step in that regard, so thank you. Yes, sir, Councilman.
This also is an area that I'm very interested in, so I look forward to meeting you and talking to you about it, and Josh from the Tampa Chamber was here earlier, but you may know that Chamber has a committee that's set up to work on this too, so I look forward to, you know, helping move this forward.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Were there any questions on item thirty, which was the community building?
Councilman Dingfelter, or do those go together in your eyes?
Oh, sorry. I guess you need to move item twenty-nine first.
You're fine, we can...
And, no, but one of the questions was kind of, and you sort of mentioned it, but I think, Mr. Goode, it sort of might respond to what you were asking. So when you said, when you take, start with a hundred and forty thousand dollars and then you add, take off those various down payment assistance, that sort of thing, you said it came down to approximately, what, like?
A hundred.
A hundred, and so the mortgage, the mortgage, P-I-T-I, for the hundred would be?
Around six hundred a month.
About six hundred a month. So that's, and I think that's actually a good analysis, so that's your goal, is to get, and so they can take that fifteen hundred dollar rent payment, we can get them qualified, they have to take classes, I assume, in terms of, you know, their life skills and their home management skills and that sort of thing? I think that's what they do in Habitat.
Yes.
Same type of classes and programs, make sure that they can pay those bills, and then we get them in there maybe six, seven hundred dollars a month instead of the fifteen hundred.
And they're saving quite a bit of money, and they're really able to...
And they create the stability and the equity and the wealth, and we rebuild the middle class.
Right.
Thank you.
I'll move, I'll be glad, without any other questions, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else?
I'll be glad to move items twenty-nine and thirty. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second? We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelter, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, yeah, next we're going to go to item number thirty-six, and for, and I think Councilman Dingfelter said something very wise with regards to items on the consent agenda, is that sometimes council members will pull that. I know today, obviously everybody was very busy with the first day of council and all that stuff, so that's why I know a lot of items were pulled, but often these are things that can be dealt with through a phone call, that's how I usually do it, but sometimes they can't, and so we often have them pulled, but it didn't take long. So next we're going to item number thirty-six with Mr. Schnelling, sir.
Okay. Tom Schnelling, Planning and Development Director, now at risk of repeating myself again, I don't know a lot of stuff, but I know the right people to know. I'm going to introduce Annette Triplet, she's the Executive Director for the Tampa Hillsborough Homeless Initiative, and she can go over some of the programs that we've been working on. I'm just going to touch very quickly, what I handed out to you was our most recent point-in-time count. One of the first things that Annette did when she came to Tampa, many communities do a point-in-time count every other year, because we wanted to get a much more accurate breakdown of what we did and what our homelessness impact is and what the real numbers are, we were able to, we got permission, in essence, to do the point-in-time count every year. Generally, as you can see, when she first started here in twenty fourteen, through some of her programs and some of the other stuff that she can touch on in a second, generally we've gone down over that five-year period about fifteen percent, which is a significant number. We have reached what is called functional zero, which means the homelessness that we do experience, we work very hard in making it a very short and infrequent experience of homelessness. I, you know, you're not ever going to be able to walk outside and just see absolutely nobody on the streets, because that's a very close impossibility to do, but what we can do, what we have done, is get down to what is called functional zero by keeping homelessness brief, short-lived, and infrequent, so if somebody is homeless, they experience it one time, and they utilize a lot of the programs with our continuum of care providers that help keep them in a house. One of the other things that I've talked on, and then I'll give the floor to Annette, sooner or later you're going to hear about Trinity Cafe if you haven't already, so what we have done, along with Annette and Vanessa, myself, Officer McDonald and Randy Witten from the TPD, some folks from the Sheriff's Department, Tom Mance, who is the Chair/CEO for Feeding Tampa Bay, they have taken over the operation of that. We're also working with Hillsborough County, but the significance in that is Trinity Cafe previously would just do food distribution. They would, you know, they would offer people luncheons from, you know, time A to time B, and then, and that was it. What we have got them to agree to do through the work that Annette has done, is to allow us to come in there once a month, twice a month, whatever that is, to kind of start doing some interviews of the folks that are using this facility, this opportunity to have some food, and interview them and try to get them into what is called our Unity System, which, that starts to identify what their needs are, what other kind of services can help address why they're homeless or why they are on a poverty level, because many of the folks that go into Trinity Cafe are not necessarily homeless, though there is a significant population of homeless people that take advantage of what Trinity Cafe does. But now that we're able to go in there and do these interviews and evaluate what kinds of services we can best bring to bear to get to the functional zero status that I was talking about, is a significant step, because previously we weren't, we did not have access, but with Thomas Mance there, who is coincidentally on the Tampa Hillsborough Homeless Initiative Board with me, so he is very much in tune to the situation that's going on, and he was very willing to allow us to try to get in, to get the services there. The other thing that we're trying to do is to get into Trinity Cafe, because it is a, if it was transportation, it would be a trip generator, but it's a generator for people, it's an attraction, the people come in there, to provide other types of services, you know, maybe once a reading, different kinds of screenings and things like that, because as some of the other folks were talking about, you know, it's the quality of life that you try to create, so if you can have, find out what's going on with people through various kinds of screenings...
Finger pointing.
Twenty-nine more seconds, and I'm done.
You're working.
The various kinds of screenings that you can provide, now that you have an audience that you have access to, you can figure out what those needs are, so we're very happy and very excited about our ability to work with Trinity Cafe, and just so you know, folks, neighborhood people from the VNEbor area sit on the same panel every month with us, and so we get pretty immediate feedback as to what's working or what's not working.
Good morning. I'm Annette H. Triplet, the CEO for the Tampa Hillsborough Homeless Initiative, and typically every year I meet with each of the council members one-on-one to talk about what we're doing on homelessness, so I look forward to setting up a schedule to meet with you all again this year. The Tampa Hillsborough Homelessness Initiative is designated by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, to be the lead entity for the strategic plan on homelessness. We're also designated by state government and local government to be the lead entity for the strategic plan on homelessness. On a monthly basis, we meet with over seventy providers within our community to strategize on homeless issues. Tampa Hillsborough Homeless Initiative focuses on six strategic priorities to make homelessness rare, brief, and non-recurring in our community, and those focus groups are in line with the national focus groups, so ending veteran, making veteran chronically homeless, homeless among unaccompanied youth, family, and unsheltered a priority in our community. Also, what we've added to our list is increasing the number of housing units and vouchers available to those experiencing homelessness. So, so, so working on the issue of homelessness is extremely complicated. Our organization maintains the collaboration, we develop innovative ideas around homelessness, we partner with other agencies, and we bring in resources to the community to provide services for those experiencing homelessness. I've given you a list of some of the pieces to the puzzle, this list is endless, but some of the pieces to the puzzle are prevention and diversion, we have mobile outreach within our community, we're working on rapidly rehousing people, that's a national methodology, we're also working on short-term and long-term housing vouchers, we also have set aside units for those experiencing homelessness that we partner with Hillsborough County on those issues, and we're also working on increasing funding, private and public funding. The continuum of care has several signature events and collaboration, and I'll just list a couple of them here. Operation Revoli provides homeless, homes for at least twenty-five homeless veterans. Every Veterans Day, we've been doing that since two thousand and fourteen. Last year we did the first-ever Hillsborough County Expungement Clinic, where over about a hundred and fifty people that had criminal records were able to get those records sealed and expunged, and then something new that we've started over the last two years, it's called a CASH program, it's community-wide, affordable, supportive housing. What we experienced, those that have housing vouchers still can't get into housing. The housing vouchers provided on the state and national level, about eight hundred dollars, and housing in Tampa and Hillsborough for one bedroom can easily get to two, three thousand dollars. So we incentivize the landlord or property owner to rent to those that have rental history, financial issues, or criminal background issues. So the last page that I'm going to show you, Tom already went over the point-in-time count with you, just an example of the expungement clinic results. We partner with the state's Attorney's Office, they did all of the legwork. Tampa Hillsborough Homeless Initiative raised the funds to waive the seventy-five-dollar fee. Eighteen hundred people applied for the expungement clinic, two hundred and eighty-two applications were approved, a hundred and forty-three people were processed, and it was a savings to our citizens of over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, based on the pro bono work and the waivers fees that were made available. That's the end of my presentation. I look forward to meeting with you all one-on-one to discuss more details about what we do as an organization.
Thank you, Councilman Goode.
Good morning.
Good morning.
A person who's familiar with homelessness, who dealt with all types of people that are homeless, a lot of people don't know there are different types of homelessness.
Absolutely.
A lot of times, some of our folks that are battling mental illness, no matter what you do, they want to be homeless.
Let me disagree with you. So no one ever wants to be homeless. People have not, may not have the wherewithal to accept the services, so that's maybe just the semantics, but people may not have, you know, we're dealing with people that might have, think like a three-year-old, so they really can't consent to some of the service, and it takes years and years to build up that relationship, that may have bridges that have been burned for them trying to access services, so...
Let me get to my point now, okay?
Yes, sir.
Again, I know the different types of homeless, because I've dealt with them for many, many years. I went to the Tampa Bay Feeding America Coalition they had a couple of weeks ago, two, three weeks ago, and I think it was a good round table, but I made some suggestions at that time, I'll make them to you as well.
Yes.
We have a lot of families, people don't understand a lot of families are homeless, and we have to look at, when people have past indiscretions, they're being prevented from getting a place, and no one, everybody wants to have a two-parent home, and a lot of times, one of those parents has a past indiscretion.
Yes.
And that kills the whole process. We've got to find a way to get away from that process, because that's what's hurting a lot of our families from getting a place to stay. We also have to look at an area in the city to collaborate with the county and the state to find an area that we can have a place where I call a center, where people can go to, that's away from communities, because a lot of times communities are upset, especially Trinity Cafe, I've dealt with them, I know their issues, because sometimes people who are sometimes having emotional problems, or they don't understand about communities anymore, and people in communities get upset, because they don't understand why these things are happening in their community. So we also have to look at collaboration with those certain entities to find an area, what I call a tracking place, where we're tracking those families, those veterans, those persons with mental illness, and get them to services that they need, so I like those, these efforts, but for me, I think we have to find a way to get away from past indiscretions holding people, that, to me, that's the biggest thing I find with homelessness, people can't get in because of past indiscretions.
I agree completely with you, that's one reason we did the expungement event, people can't get better employment, they can't get housing, they can't get better education with a criminal record. In many cases, this, the people that applied for the expungement clinic, they didn't get a conviction. No one that got the service had a conviction, but there were difficulties, so we have on our website where people that exit the expungement clinic were literally in tears because they had this hanging over their heads for ten, fifteen, twenty years. The other reason why we started the CASH program is to incentivize those landlords to take those people that have past indiscretions, like you talked about, and so we lock them into a ten-year or fifteen-year commitment on those particular units. And so I'd love to discuss in detail with you about those, and hear your ideas for additional ideas.
Councilman Citro.
Thank you very much. To touch on Councilman Goode's point, there are some people that are without a home...
Yes.
Due to mental illness, because they simply don't have the medication that they need. Does your program help provide or help assist those people that do not have the medication or cannot afford the medication to balance their personalities out?
Yes, we work really closely with the Hillsborough County Health Department that has the Hillsborough County Healthcare Plan. Two years ago, we did not have what we call dedicated SOAR specialists, and SOAR specialists help people that have mental health issues or any type of social security eligible disability get those social security benefits and expedite that process. We went from zero to seven in less than two years, so the Hillsborough County Healthcare Plan has really stepped up with providing additional services. As you may know, just a couple of months ago, they removed the three strikes on that, and so we've been having that discussion with them ongoing for the last couple of years of how can we increase the services to those that are experiencing homelessness. We're also working with the Central Florida Behavioral Health to increase the number of services and redirect or reallocate funds that they can take care of, and we can provide more housing vouchers.
And how do you get this information to the people who need it the most? Do you have liaison people to go out into the field? Do you have liaison people to go out into the field?
We do. So our office deals primarily with the providing the strategic oversight and the funding, not necessarily the direct services. We work with all of the...
And that's one of the reasons we're kind of excited about our access to Trinity Cafe because you can, when we go there, you will be identifying exactly the kinds of folks that you are. You know, why is this person here? Is it medication-related? Is it some other kind of emotional problem that they're having that's preventing them from moving forward or trying to help themselves? That's why we're very happy about being able to get in there because we can start to identify people, and they come together in a smaller group, so it'll be very effective for us.
Could you please contact Ms. Lorena Hardwick, my aide, so that I can set up an appointment with you?
Yes, and one other thing that we're working on that we're really excited about, we're having discussions about, those that will never be able to pay their rent on their own, will never be able to cook food on their own, how can we provide housing, secure housing for those persons that have mental health issues and never be able to live on their own? So we're exploring some ideas about that and having discussions with the city, the county, the housing authority, and service providers. And so I'll update you on that as well.
Anyone else from council? Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, ma'am. This past year, I had the opportunity to, as a public defender, Assistant Public Defender, to work with Ms. Holt on, specifically in Mental Health Court as well as Veterans Court. And like Mr. Goode's, who has plenty of experience in this area, working with these folks, it's very eye-opening, and a lot of these folks cross over. The veterans are, you know, they're veterans, they might have mental health issues, and it's Mr. Chairman who's worked on these veteran issues as well. But definitely very eye-opening. But what I was wondering about was, on your chart under subpopulation data, when it talks about mental, breaks it out in terms of quantities or numbers, mental illness, substance use disorder, HIV/AIDS, and domestic violence, are those... And I do remember going out on the street and doing these, taking information many years ago. I think it's actually something that you should invite all of us to do.
I was just getting ready to say yes.
Yeah. It's a good exercise, you know, to spend a couple of hours doing that and talking to folks one-on-one, and you really get a better feel for what we're talking about. But those items, are those self-reported?
Yes, sir.
So really, they might actually be a little low because if you walk up and you're taking things and say, okay, you know, how's your mental health, you know, they might not want to self-report that.
The ones that are, the homeless count is done in two phases. Basically, in the shelter where the providers have the information and can complete that, and then the street count, which is done by survey. We're still doing the paper survey, but we moved to electronic version via cellphone this year.
But that's, those categories are self-reported?
All self-reported.
So they might be conservative?
They might be conservative.
Okay. Yeah, as Mr. Citro indicated, I hope you'll come brief all of us, all of us newbies individually, and we've got a lot to learn.
We will be in touch with you, your office today.
And I wanted to thank you. I know, I especially see here the decrease in veterans. I know you yourself are a veteran, and that's a cause very close to your heart. I think that's a wonderful thing, it goes without saying. I think something that Councilman Goode's talked about, which is the punitive measures that we've taken against people who have made mistakes that go outside of the justice that is required in the case, I think has caught up with us as a society. We've begun to take steps, whether it's things like the three-strikes rule, readdressing that, whether it's the steps, the historic steps that our state took or attempted to take, depending on what happens in Tallahassee, if you ask me, with Amendment Four, we're really making remedies in that regard, and I think it's really, really good. And I think Councilman Dingfelder talked about us doing the homeless count. I would love to do that if my schedule permits it. I think that's great. You know, I was probably going over my pay grade and telling this story, but I remember reading, I think it was a book by Doris Kearns Goodwin on President Johnson, where, I think it was George Reedy asked the president, you know, why are you doing this war on poverty? Poor people don't vote. And President Johnson said, I don't care if I get a single vote out of this, so long as by the end of our program, the people of this country know that poor people exist and live among them. And that's what this program does. It really, on a local level, builds on that great national aspiration, so I thank you all for that. Anything else from council? Okay, thank you, guys. Thank you for your work.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next, we now move to our 10:30 public hearings. We have a motion by Councilman Citro, I think it was, to move the public hearing. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor. Okay, we, the ladies have it. Let's move on to item number thirty-four.
Wait, what's that?
Oh, thank you. Sworn in, please.
Do you solemnly swear in order to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Council. Rebecca Kurt, Assistant City Attorney, I am here on item thirty-four. Item thirty-four is an appeal of a zoning administrative decision to deny a special use request. First, a special use request is a request for a use that is allowed in a specific zoning district, but it has to meet additional criteria. Some of those come directly to you as a special use too. You will typically see those as alcohol permits. Some of those go directly to staff. When it goes directly to staff for a review, those are called an SU1, that's what this is, staff reviews the special use request by the specific criteria. If any of those are not met, staff can do no further analysis about whether or not waivers should be granted, they have to deny it. And then it goes to city council, where city council does have the ability to grant waivers to the specific criteria. So that's the position you're in today. You have a special use request that did not meet the very specific criteria in your code, and so there was a request to have it heard by city council to consider a waiver to those criteria. That's completely appropriate. It's not a variance, it doesn't require hardship. What the waiver criteria, there are specific waiver criteria that you apply in determining whether to grant the waiver, and those are in your staff report. There are the general standards, and they are on page two and three of your staff report. So when you're looking to see whether or not city council feels it's appropriate to grant the waiver, those are the criteria that you're looking at. Staff will come up in a minute and explain to you the underlying request in general. It was for a congregate living facility, which again is an allowed use, and there was only one criteria that was not met. So that's really what the focus is before council today.
And if I may, Ms. Kurt, Councilman Dingfelder?
I'll let Ms. Kurt finish, but I did have a question, legal.
Okay.
Okay. I am also going to pass out sample motions for you. There's one to affirm the zoning administrator's decision and one to reverse it. We do this because it can be a little confusing because if you deny it, you're actually affirming. And so these are your sample motions. At the end of it, you have the ability to state any additional facts that you feel are relevant to your decision, but this contains the criteria because any time that city council grants, or any time city council denies a development order, on state statute, you have to state the specific criteria, and so therefore, that's contained in your sample And I'm available for any questions.
Councilwoman.
And I want to couch this in a very, in a very broad... Ms. Kurt? Because we haven't heard any evidence yet. I don't, you know, I don't know what the specific issues are, other than what I've read so far. But in a very general sense, as an attorney, I'm aware, actually participated in some litigation surrounding special uses for certain categories of people, group homes, you know, that sort of thing. So I'm aware that that litigation is out there. Often, it's in federal court. I mean, you know me, I'm not afraid of litigation when the city needs to make a decision. We need to make a decision based upon law and the evidence and that sort of thing. But in a very general sense, is there any caution, cautionary, or caution that you would give council as related to group homes, their, you know, how the federal law might impact that in terms of that use being in a particular neighborhood? A lot of times, neighborhoods get scared about various types of group homes. You know, litigation that I had in Pinellas is totally unrelated, but involved like an alcohol-drug rehab, ultimately, the city lost over there because the neighbors didn't want it, but the federal law protected them. Anyway, you get my question? Any broad, you know, cautionary that you'd like to give?
I'm not sure I'd say cautionary, but I will provide some additional background information based upon your specific question. This is a request for a congregate living facility, and staff can give you more specifics about exactly what the request is. That does not automatically trigger ADA protection, but it could. And ADA protection is American Disabilities Act. We do have in our code now, which I believe has been adopted within the last couple of years, a specific provision that if somebody is requesting a reasonable accommodation for a disability, that goes through a separate process. We feel that that was appropriate because there are certain legal standards that have to be both demonstrated and evaluated by the city when they're looking whether or not you need to make a reasonable accommodation. That's an administrative process because that shouldn't be a political decision. I mean, that's very clear, you know, a legal standard that needs to be met. That is not what's before you today. That being said, I certainly would caution all of you, not that you would do it, but for the record, that it would be inappropriate to deny any request based upon a disability, either real or a perceived disability. So in the event that any evidence comes up that people are concerned that somebody has a disability, that is not a legal basis to deny this. That being said, we are not in the reasonable accommodation process. That is an avenue that is available to the applicant in this case, but they chose to go forward with the special use criteria. So as long as you're not basing your denial upon either a disability or a perceived disability, then I would just ask you to apply the general standards to consideration of the waiver.
That's exactly where I was headed. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning. Eric Cotton, Development Coordination. I'm here on a petition for review for SU1-1905. The property is located at 402 West Sitka Street, and the applicant's name is Lissandra Montagudo. Hope I had that correctly. The request is, the property is owned residential, single-family, R S sixty. The applicant was requesting a six-bed congregate care home licensed by the, by ADP, which is the Agency for, or APD, I guess, it's the Agency for Persons with Disabilities. When it goes to the special use criteria, as Rebecca was mentioning, there are criteria. The distance separation is twelve-hundred feet. When the person applies for it, if they cannot meet the distance separation, administratively, staff has to deny the request, and the applicant can then come before city council and appeal for the decision. In this case, the, this is the subject property at the corner of Sitka and Ola. Within four-hundred-and-thirty feet, there's another congregate care home. The one that's, that doesn't, that's causing the distance separation not to be met is a congregate care home licensed by the Agency for Healthcare Administration, which is a different licensing agency. Just to give you some pictures of the property itself, this is a property from, looking at it straight from Sitka Street. That's the corner side, this is off of Ola. This is the intersection of the street of Ola and Sitka. This is looking straight up Sitka. It's a residential, it's a residential neighborhood. And then this is the property directly across the street, which is a single-family home, and a property adjacent, which is us to a single-family home. Again, the basis for the denial from staff is the fact that the applicant could not meet the criteria set forth, and based on that, again, staff has to deny the request. Does council have any questions?
Any questions? Councilman Dingfelder?
So the issue, and the reason we're here at all, is the distance separation.
Correct.
It doesn't meet the twelve-hundred, is that what you said?
Twelve-hundred feet.
Twelve-hundred feet. I saw a reference, there was an objection from transportation about driveway length and that sort of thing.
That's related specifically to the site plan. That stuff would be addressed through the permitting process.
So we wouldn't need to waive that.
That's not an issue before city council.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else, council? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next, I guess we go to the appellant. Is that Ethan Loeb? I went to law school with your, Ethan.
Oh, good morning, city council. My name is Jane Graham. I'm an attorney with Smoker Bartlett, Loeb, Heinz, and Thompson. I represent Happy Orchids Home Services and Lissandra Montagudo. Today, this is a special, this is a petition for review. We do have some exhibits. I'd like to hand them to the city, thank you, the city clerk. As the Assistant City Attorney mentioned, there are certain criteria that you have to look to today in your approval of this waiver. So why approve Happy Orchids Special Use One permit with a waiver of the twelve-thousand, twelve-hundred-foot distance separation? Well, a number of reasons. First, it clearly meets the criteria for the special use permits under 27-129. We'll work through those criteria in this presentation. On top of that, reasonable accommodation is necessary, reasonable, and legally required for persons with disabilities. It will not result in a fundamental alteration of the city zoning scheme. As you'll see, and we have a number of people here today to testify, this type of, this type of facility is a home. It poses no threat to the community, and it meets the present need of the state of Florida to provide family-based care for persons with disabilities. So this is a standard residential habilitation. It's regulated and monitored by the Florida Agency for Persons with Disabilities. The residents are there because they have a developmental disability. And so what does that mean? There's a disorder or syndrome, some type of intellectual disability, cerebral palsy, Down Syndrome, other types of disabilities that reasonably are expected to continue indefinitely. They do fall under the Florida, the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act and under the definition of handicap of the Federal Fair Housing Act. This is more than a facility, when you think of a facility as far as some kind of institution. Happy Orchids is a home. And as you can see in these photos, and you can see in the audience today, Mimi, this type of residential family setting is for providing help in persons achieving their goals, social inclusion, preserving rights, dignity, and respect. They, the Happy Orchids facility provides help with daily living skills, medication, personal care, also activities, balanced nutrition, and celebration. I won't go, I won't spend a lot of time on the background. Attorney Kurt already went through it. As far as what happened, there is an application for a special use one permit. It was received and denied based solely on the twelve-hundred-foot distance separation. And I would like to say for the record, and will provide an updated site plan related to the driveway, so that you'll see that we are in compliance with that. So 27-132, this is the one issue, the no, the twelve-hundred-foot separation. That was the specific criteria, and now you have the ability through 27-129, in looking at general standards, to assess from a broader perspective how and whether you should make a waiver for this criteria. So now I'm going to go through all the criteria. The use will ensure the public health, safety, and general welfare if located and proposed according to plan. The first thing you should know is that this type of group home is heavily licensed, regulated, and monitored by the Agency of Persons with Disabilities pursuant to Florida statutes and Florida Administrative Code. There are inspections, annual inspections, as well as inspections that happen unannounced. Just this week, Nina Girard... Just this week, Nina Giordano from the, from the agency inspected Happy Orchids other facility, and as one of, as Exhibit B, you'll see that she wrote an email just back saying, "You did an amazing job. Thank you for all your hard work and dedication." This is a very professional, committed staff. They're good at what they do. They care about the people. They help. There's no threat to the community. So number two, that it complies with required regulations and standards. As you heard from Rebecca Kurt, everything else was in compliance. The situation with the driveway has been updated. We've provided an updated site plan, and it's something that can be clarified in the final approval process. The use is compatible and contiguous with surrounding property, or the use is a public necessity? It is both. It's, first, it is a residential, single-family neighborhood, and the way that this, the Happy Orchids home is, it is a residence, and it's, it's for people just to live in a normal neighborhood. Florida statutes actually say that homes of six or fewer residents that otherwise meet the definition of a community residential home shall be deemed a single-family unit and non-commercial residential use for the purpose of local laws and ordinances. You're not going to see clustering of similar uses. The owner from the assisted living facility nearby has submitted a letter in support, and they are slightly, they're different uses, because this is for an Agency of Persons with Disabilities residential habilitation versus an assisted living facility. You'll also see in your exhibits, there are letters of support from the neighbor. Next, the use is in conformity with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. There are numerous sections. I've included excerpts of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan that explain. For example, congregant living facilities may be considered in any land use plan category that permits residential uses. It speaks to the need to adaptation of existing homes to improve the accessibility of people Number five of the criteria, the use will not establish a precedent or encourage more intensive or incompatible uses. This is, the photo that you'll see is the inside of the other Happy Orchids home, and as you can see, it's a regular home. The only difference is that there are certain requirements for disabilities, like the shower has a requirement, and it's luxurious. Other than that, it's just, it's, it's a regular house, nothing out of the ordinary. In looking at twenty-seven dash one twenty-nine B, I wanted to go through all of these really quickly. There's, this speaks to ingress egress, parking, lighting, utilities, refuse, drainage, control of potentially adverse effects generally. As, as you can see there, this is just a regular home. There's nothing unusual about it. You're not going to have a lot of traffic coming in and out. The residents will go to adult daycare facilities during the day, so it's basically the same traffic as someone who works during the day. So now we've gone through the criteria for, for twenty-seven, one twenty-nine. And so your decision today is based on that criteria. In making this decision, I want you to consider and think, as Attorney Kurt had mentioned, that reasonable accommodation is something that is governed by federal law. It's necessary, reasonable, and legally required for persons with disabilities, covered by both the Americans with Disabilities Act, Fair Housing Act, and, as mentioned, the City of Tampa Code. I do want to mention that, so in October twenty eighteen, the city did pass an ordinance related to reasonable accommodation. At the time that my client applied for the special use permit, she was not aware nor advised of, of applying under this process. At this point, we have, to cover all bases, have applied under that process, but ultimately what we want is a decision to have a waiver for the, the twelve hundred-foot distance requirement. So it's, you know, it's something that has been applied, but really, this is what we The special use permit will not result in a fundamental alteration of the city's zoning scheme or cause the city undue financial or administrative burdens. It's self-contained. There's, we're not asking the city for any administrative or financial assistance. The facility poses no threat to the community. The gentleman in the photo is, is Danny, and the little girl is actually my client's daughter. And as you can see, she'll, and she'll speak to you a little bit more, that this is a family-type residence. This is, you know, there, there's no risk. Something that is important for you to see as a distinction is that, under the APD, there's a standard residential habilitation, which is for individuals such as this who have disabilities. There's also behavioral residential habilitation, which is specific for, for people who have behavioral issues. This might be people with addiction, with other types of things that could potentially pose a risk to the community. This is not the case for Happy Orchids. Happy Orchids is completely different. It's a standard residential. It meets the present need of the state of Florida to provide family-based care for persons with disabilities. Something that you should know, as of September twenty eighteen, over twenty-one thousand people are actually on the waiting list in Florida to receive these types of services as far as having a provider like Happy Orchids. So every, every facility like Happy Orchids helps meet this critical need. Finally, Governor DeSantis actually passed a resolution in March speaking to the importance of protecting developmental disabilities and the state's commitment. Now, I'd like to introduce you to my, my client, Lisandra Montagudo, who'd like to just tell you a few words and personal perspectives.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Lisandra Montagudo, and I'm the founder and owner of Happy Orchids Home Services. Our mission is to provide individuals with developmental disabilities with help in their achievement of personal goals, social inclusion, choices, meaningful relationships, rights, dignity, and respect. Today, I'm asking you to please waive the distance requirement in the special use one permit for Happy Orchids Home Services so that we can continue to work with individuals with developmental disabilities to have the opportunity to live their dreams. I would like to talk about the role of family of Happy Orchids Home Services. This is a family business, and residents are extended family. On Christmas, they receive presents. We celebrate birthdays, and we take care of them. This is a home. My young daughter regularly interacts and has built friendships with our residents. I would never put her, or, I'm pregnant, or anyone in harm. A group home like the one proposed poses no threat to the community. Standard residential habilitation facilities are monitored monthly by APD, inspected to ensure health and safety of the individuals with disabilities while at home and in the community. They require the operators to provide implementation plans that work on individuals with disabilities' goals, daily living activities, and life skills to ensure quality of life. There will be no threat or changes in the community. There will be no exterior signs which would label the residence or functions of the facility by indicating that the facility serves individuals with disabilities. Parking, traffic, lighting, and garbage are all the same as in any other home. There will be no adverse impact from Happy Orchids in the community. There will be no threat to the community because the individuals with the disabilities that the facility will serve will not, I repeat, will not be sex offenders, drug addicts, convicts, or have any behavioral problems. I'm aware that there is an assisted living facility close by. However, both facilities will be licensed under different state agencies and will provide care and services to different types of individuals. As many of us may know, there is a need to embrace diversity and inclusion of people with disabilities to our communities by encouraging awareness of achievements of thousands of individuals with developmental disabilities who contribute daily to our communities. Our state and federal government are fully committed to supporting individuals with developmental disabilities. There are state and federal laws and regulations that have been developed to support and maximize the independence of people with developmental disabilities to create a more inclusive society. The Florida Agency for Persons with Disabilities worked with local communities and private providers, just like Happy Orchids Home Services, to support people who have developmental disabilities and their family in living, learning, and working in their communities. Additionally, providing assistance in identifying the needs of people with developmental disabilities for supports and services and educating the public on disability issues. Happy Orchids Home Services respectfully and humbly requests a waiver of the distance requirement of our standard residential habilitation group home in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else?
Well, we, we do have a number of members in the audience. I don't know if...
Well, we have public comment, and they can speak during that time. We're actually going to roll to that. Do you have anything else for your presentation?
No, that's, that's all, unless you have any questions.
Okay. And before we get, Mr. Shelby had asked Councilman, that before we get to comments, your questions that we should hear from the public.
Okay.
So let's, we're going to go to public comment now, if we may. Okay, anyone who wishes to speak on this, please come forward and make your case. Go ahead, sir.
I'm also a veteran. My sister happens to be in the best care ever.
Oh, and I'm so sorry, so let's, has everybody in there, have you been sworn in? No, you know what? Okay, if we can have everyone sworn in.
Shirley, could you please announce, when you ask people to be sworn in, if you could ask them to stand and raise their right hand, if you can include that?
Yeah, anybody that wishes to speak, please stand up and be sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Sir.
And if you would like to talk to one of the...
Of course, of course. And state your name, if you could, sir.
Yes, my name is Harry M. Morales, and I'm representing my sister, Carmen Morales. She is currently sixty-six years old, and ever since she's been eight years old, she's had mental issues, physical disabilities, and all her entire life, she's been in institutions where they've provided some type of mental care or physical disability care. But up until we enrolled in the ADP, ADP program, my sister has been extremely well taken care of, especially when we met Lisandra and Happy Orchard. When we sat down and had our meeting, I was relieved that my brother and I, who is also a retired Air Force Colonel, I'm retired Sergeant, First Class from the Army, were able to find a home who understands the basic necessities and the needs of someone like my sister. At no fault, she just happened to unfortunately grow to be a disabled person, but, and I thank God that we finally found Happy Orchard, I already mentioned that, but they have provided my sister with such a physical and emotional stability that we're just overwhelmed with the fact that not only Lisandra and her mom and the staff that work there take such precaution in everything they do. And I can assure you that my sister, if you happen to go and visit the site, she is very happy. She understands where she's at, and she has adapted to this home environment. My mom passed away two years ago, and in her will. She specifically appointed me to be her legal guardian, and I had to bring her from Puerto Rico when she passed away, and we were fortunate enough to find this program. And ever since, it's been almost two years now, close to three, she has been provided with the best care ever, and I hope you consider the presentation today and grant this waiver. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
And she really loves.
And she loves to be with us.
And she hopes that you grant.
The petition.
Because we need more people like Happy Orchard. And she thanks you for this meeting.
Thank you.
Amen. Thank you, Mary. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item? Okay. Being done, I know we have some comments and questions from council members, beginning with Councilman Menace Calvo.
Well, first, thank you very much for, for being here. I'm sorry you have to go through this process, but we do have our code and our rules and regulations. I see that the only thing that's holding this back is this distance separation because there is an assisted living or for elderly retired four hundred and thirty feet away. If not, there wouldn't be all of this. But, you know, I, I think you provide a, a necessary and very good service to the community. Of course, it's in, in demand because you have so many people that are on waiting lists. I mean, you're, you're approved from the state level all the way down. You're in compliance. I know there was an issue or discussion about a driveway, but the issue here is this waiver that's being requested for the, for the distance separation. I have no issue. You have support from neighbors. You don't have an angry mob of people here saying they don't want you in the neighborhood. I've been here for four years, so I witnessed several different cases. I know we still have to go to other discussions through council members, but I'm happy to support reversing the decision and approving the permit. But of course, we have to, so have the discussion.
Thank you. Councilman Gudz.
You know, it always makes me feel very emotional when I see others helping others. You, you have to have a certain level of compassion to help people. And I see you have that, and I see your organization has that. Being a person who served the public, and I've been to many places where people don't take care of people with disabilities, they mistreat them just to take money and just to do things they shouldn't do. But I see that you have a, a loving heart. I know we, we're not meeting the requirements, but sometimes we have to waive some things when things need to be waived, and very much you're going to consider that. Thank you for coming, and thank you for bringing her. Thank you.
Councilman...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you study my past record on these, I have never supported one that was anywhere the twelve hundred feet. However, sometimes, understanding of the need and necessities override the rule of law. So in this case, I'll be supporting it.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Citron.
Thank you, Councilman. If, Ms. Rand, is it, and Mr. Cotton?
Grant.
Thank you. I heard you state that, please stand up to the podium. I heard you state that there was letters of support.
Yes.
Do you or Mr. Cotton know of any letters or emails of opposition?
Yes, there were several letters of opposition. No one is here today opposing. And actually, when you, when you read the letters of opposition, it's interesting because the concern is that this would be some kind of facility that would have posed a violent risk to the community. And as you've heard today, this type of home does not pose that type of risk. I think that the letters might arise from some type of misconception about what Happy Orchids does.
As, as, on my part... As has -- on my prior boards, I was always a community activist. That's how I was listed. So I do like to hear from the community. Mr. Cotton, will you concur with her that those letters do state or ask the questions of the type of people living in the residence?
Eric Cotton, under line coordination, I am just looking at what was in the file. There's a form letter that I'm not -- this person's objecting to it, although she understands that they are asking for people with developmental disabilities. She did write, she objects to it. There's another one in here that says they strongly object to it, and I'm not quite sure because they say, I think this is the Daniel that was living in your facility?
No.
Oh, that's a different one. That's not your facility. There is, there are some letters of objection for it, and it's more of -- but there are, I mean, they don't -- here's one that talks about, she's concerned about drug squatters, drug-dealing squatters next door, and those are the only ones that were in here that were objection letter.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you. Councilman Ding Felder.
Thank you. Eric, don't go far. From a historical perspective, and perhaps Ms. Kirk could help us as well, and maybe this is something not specific to this request, but in a bigger sense and a later date, what is the history on the separation? I mean, I understand the separation in zoning code as related to bars and, you know, other types of uses like that, but what is -- do you know the history on this type of separation?
The separation standards, the original one is actually in the state, is under state statute. Basically, congregate living facilities, whether they be licensed by ACHA or by Agency for Persons with Disabilities or Children and Family Services, there's a state statute that says you're exempt from local zoning with up to six residents if you're with, if you're -- there's not another one within 1,000 feet.
Okay.
Our code references 1,200. I don't know if at one point the state was 1,200, and we mimic the state, or why ours is a little bit more, that I don't know, but that's the basis for it. So what happens when somebody comes in and applies for, the land development or zoning office signs off on the applications. So we look at if there's another one within 1,000 feet, we tell them they have, we deny the request and tell them they have to go through the special use process. Apply for the special use. We tell them upfront, we will deny the request, and then they need to file a petition for review and come before City Council. And then council has the ability to waive the specific criteria and the special use criteria.
Just as long as we're discussing, I think it's something we should revisit and review whether or not we even need that separation requirement to put folks, you know, groups like this through this, but something we can talk about at a later date, but let's talk about it.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I thank you guys for being here. 110 percent, I mean that. Okay. Motion closed by Councilman Miranda. Second by Councilman Meniskalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? What is the pleasure of council? Councilman Meniskalco.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I move to reverse the zoning administrator's denial of special use permit application SU-1-19-05 because the petitioner has demonstrated that the petition, if the waiver is granted, is consistent with the applicable general standards set forth in Section 27-129. At the time of permitting, the site plan must meet all applicable code and technical standards, see Section 27-61B and 27-127B II. I believe that the waiver should be granted for the petition because it has met the general standards contained in Section 27-129.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Meniskalco, a second by Councilman Ding Felder. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. And now that the hearing is done, I wanted to say, if I may--
Thank you.
You know, thank you. I didn't say this thing during the hearing because it wouldn't be appropriate, but I actually have an older brother, Juan, who's developmentally disabled. He lives at a group home in Brandon, New Horizons Group Home, so I -- all this stuff that y'all talk about Medicaid waiver, APD, the waiting list of 21,000 people that should be cut down to zero people, I know 110 percent about that. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next, we go to item 35, which apparently cannot be heard as we have no affidavit.
A motion, please, to reschedule--
Move to reschedule to August 1st, 2019.
We have--
10:38.
A motion by Councilman Meniskalco, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now we get to motions and whatnot. Councilman Ding--
Just as a follow-up, at some point at a later date, I'd like, and I'll let them schedule it, I'd like legal staff to address this issue and any possible amendments to our zoning code to perhaps take the burden off of these types of homes in coming through this probably expensive process.
Second. Do we have a date for that?
You know-- If I may suggest to add it to the amendment cycle, Mr. Torito?
South Torito, Legal Department. I have a recommendation, too. You're stuck, apparently, what I heard here, to the 1,000 feet irrespective of what you say. It might have helped, and I'm not sure what the staff would have said, but when I was doing this years ago as a hearing officer, we would have these kinds of issues come up before us where the staff had no authority, but they would give us a recommendation that they were in favor of moving forward. And that would have saved a lot of time today. They may not have taken that position, but they're in a position right now. If they think this is something that you should be hearing only because they can't make that decision that you can, it may be something you can put in the code that they should be making a recommendation and would cut through a lot of this long discussion. We'll look at that as well, and they may not want to do that, but that's something that I'm suggesting.
Right. It's 1,200. Sounds like maybe we could do 1,000. Maybe we could add that provision. I'm sure Rebecca could be very creative on what else we might be able to--
Thank you, Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department. I would ask that you set this for a staff report sometime 30, probably 30 days, to make changes to Chapter 27, which this is, you can do twice a year. So we would need to have whatever amendments we're proposing settled by July, and I think you may want some discussion rather than just put it in July cycle because then you're not going to see it for several months after that. So you may want to have some input before--
Mr. Shelby, do you have a recommendation on the--
You have a calendar in front of you, council. It's council's pleasure. You say 30 days, then, a staff report or a workshop? You have a--
Staff reports.
Staff reports? 30 days would be, the next one would be June 6th?
Okay.
That would be fine, and I'll move that and I have one other. I'll move that.
Go ahead, Councilman Carlson. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So the motion, then, is as stated by Ms. Kurt, to bring it back under staff reports under June 6th?
Yes.
Thank you. Second?
Okay. And Councilman, did you have a time and a friendly amendment?
Yeah, you alluded to looking at more than just the specific issue on group homes. I don't know if it's appropriate to do it exactly in this conversation or adjacent to it, but it seems like if you're going to go in and look at it, that we could look at all the rules regarding this and see if anything's out of date, not in line with statute.
Absolutely. Friendly motion itself.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Ding Felder with a friendly amendment by Councilman Carlson and a second by Councilman Meniskalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything further, sir?
Yes, since we're on, since we're on a little window here on code amendments and zoning code amendments, and I'm glad you brought that to our attention. Mr. Citro and I, sitting on the variance board, and Mr. Citro did a great job as chairman. The issue of front porches came up periodically, and Ms. Kristin is here and says, well, it would come up periodically, and right now, our zoning code allows front porch, front porches to be added almost as a matter of right in the RS 50, but in the RS 60, it's administrative, and RS 75 and RS 100, it's not allowed per se. I think many people in our community over the last eight or 10 years have been using this front porch ordinance to add front porches or to include front porches in their new construction, which is, I think, is a wonderful thing, and we can go into at a later date. I would like to, us to explore the possibility of taking the front porch ordinance and expanding it to all zoning districts where appropriate, perhaps not in the Hyde Park District or the other historic districts because they have their own issues and regulations, but in terms of the Euclidean zonings of RS 60, 75, 100, and what have you, to expand it. So I'd like to add that 30 days from now to that same date. Mr. Shelby?
June 6th?
Mr. Ding Felder, if I may, if you're anticipating, the staff reports are very short, five minutes discussion, which the original motion on the previous one seemed pretty short and straightforward, so I thought it was appropriate for either a staff report or workshop, but this sounds like it may warrant a little bit more discussion, so you may want to schedule that for a workshop.
Mr. Shelby?
It's your pleasure.
If that's council's pleasure, your next workshop date would be June 20th, 9:00 a.m.
Does that fit into our schedule in terms of the next cycle of amendments?
I did not hear the date.
Oh, I'm sorry. June 20th? That's the June workshop.
Yes, it's a very, but to be honest, it's a very short timeframe. At that date, you will pretty much have to come to conclusion of what you'd like to see because July 15th, I believe it's July 15th, thereabouts, is the cutoff date. And I was just also asked that you ask planning staff because they really have--
Of course, absolutely.
-- integral input into, obviously, your planning--
And not just planning staff, but I'd also like to include in the motion a report from the building department staff, and if they can come up with it in terms of folks who have been, you know, using the RS 50, in the RS 50, using the ordinance to add front porches, perhaps give us photographs of examples and, you know, that sort of thing, because, like I say, Mr. Citro and I have seen many instances where, you know, people want to add front porches, but the city sort of gets in the way, and I'm trying to get the city out of the way so folks can do that. But anyway, I'll take your advice, schedule it under that workshop date.
If I can, is it my understanding, Ms. Kurt? I'm sorry. I just want to be clear that it'll still, you still want it then for, because you also have a May workshop, but that's only a few weeks away. I don't know whether you want that date of May 23rd, but I, if it can be prepared for then, but the next workshop after that is June 20th.
For this particular discussion, I think it's really your planning staff who's going to be doing most of the work, so I feel uncomfortable putting them forth to come back in two weeks, so--
The question is, is enough time for the staff to be able to get their job done to make the cycle even on June 20th is the question.
Well, by July 15th, there has to be clear direction from City Council of what you would like to see. It doesn't have to be the exact language. That gets worked out over time, but you need something specific.
I'm good with June 20th. The council is amenable to that.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Ding Felder, a second by Councilman Meniskalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. And for the clerk, did we get that in a succinct?
Okay, good. Thank you. Anything further, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Nothing?
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman? Okay, Councilman?
No, great, great first day. Hope you enjoyed. Next week will be longer with our meeting. Good job.
Thank you. Councilman Citro.
Nothing at this time, Chairman.
Councilman Miranda.
Chairman, I, well, the council scheduled a meeting for May the 16th for the revenue finance report for mid-year, maybe May 16th, 2019, this, two weeks from now. The purpose is for the mid-range report so that the council could be updated on to where we're at on the budget between the start and the middle of this year, so we all appraise the facts, and this process is done every year midterm.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Meniskalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything further?
That's it, sir.
Councilman Gudz.
Well, gentlemen, it's been a pleasure today. From what I've heard from the council sitting here today, we're compassionate about our neighborhoods, we're compassionate about the people of the city of Tampa, and that's a good sign. I think the citizens should be very proud today that we're on a line of making sure we make things happen for our residents, so God bless you all.
Thank you, sir. And if I may, I have two motions. I'm going to move the gavel over to Councilman Meniskalco. First, I request that council prepare a commendation for Delta Sigma Theta for their annual Delta Day at City Hall. Further, the commendation be presented before council on May 16th, 2019, under ceremonial activities.
We have a motion from Councilman Vera with a second. Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? No? Go ahead.
And then, second, if I may, a motion have a representative from US SOCOM make a presentation on May 16th on the Warrior Games at the regular city council meeting at 9:00 a.m. under ceremonial activities. The Warrior Games will be coming to the city of Tampa on June 21st through 30th, which is going to be a tremendous, tremendous asset and find for our city. About 300 wounded and disabled veterans are going to be playing in Olympic sports, and Jon Stewart, who's already been here to Tampa twice, is going to be hosting them, and it's going to be a really great time, and I wanted to have our friends from SOCOM come and brief us on that, so--
All right. We have a motion from Councilman Vera with a second. Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Nothing further?
I will proceed to file all documents today.
Motion to receive and file by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.[1748.53]